Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to welcome you all to the regular meeting of the Wareham School Committee. This is April 8th. And as my last official act as chair, I would like to welcome Judy Capriccio and welcome her to our committee. And I'd like to congratulate Jeff on being re-elected. It's coming, you know, why anybody would want to do that? I don't know. But anyways, I want to thank both of them for being here. So, nice round of applause.[33.11][33.11](APPLAUSE). At this time, I would like to turn over the chairman, the chair temporarily, to our superintendent of schools to conduct the realignment of the school committee.
Thank you, Dr. Sylvia. At this time, I would be taking nominations for chairman of the school committee.
I would like to nominate Mr. Jeff Swett as chair.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any more nominations? Okay. I move for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain.
Five, zero, zero?
Five, zero, zero?
Five, zero, zero? All right.
Okay.
All right. No, come on. Don't forget your name. I guess I'll wait till after. I'll send you coffee. Cliff has always done a great job in leading this committee, and this past year has been no exception. So, many thanks, Cliff.
Thank you.[124.36][124.36](APPLAUSE). Thank you.
The next order of business is to elect a vice-chair for this committee. I will take nominations, please.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Mel Lazarus as vice-chair of the school committee.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations to consider? Okay. All those in favor, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Can I keep this seat? Can I stay here?
For now.
In this case, the plug. Yes. I would have been happy to keep mine. Congratulations, Bill. Thank you.[168.81][168.81](APPLAUSE). And finally, I'd like to take nominations for clerk of the school committee.
Mr. Chair, it is my pleasure to nominate Mrs. Rhonda Vugan as clerk for the school committee.
Second. Any other nominations? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain? We are done with the reorganization process. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next order of business is public participation. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak to the school committee? We'd love to hear from you.
Mr. Chair, do we have security?
Well, the thought did occur to me, but I thought I'd wait to see what this guest had to say.
Miss you, Mike.
Mr. Flaherty, we've forgiven you for abandoning us.
Yes.
And we are always pleased to have you here.
Thank you. Mike Flaherty, former school committee member. I want to just welcome Mrs. Capriccio to the role. Very clean campaign, very happy to see you there. Ditto, Mr. Swett. I'm here, actually, because not being up there anymore, I don't have an opportunity to share some good news. So, I just want to share some good news. And recently, come to find out that the tennis court has needed some shoveling from all the snow. And I went and helped Mr. Swett and some members of the tennis team, Nicole and others. And I just thought it was very heartwarming to see the community come together like that. It happens a lot at the schools, I notice. And just when the call's made, people go out there and make short work of it. Also had the pleasure, I didn't have a chance to go to the DECA Open House. I heard it was great. But I did have the opportunity to receive some basketball, Celtics basketball tickets that someone wanted a raffle, but they couldn't go, so I ended up with them. And I had the pleasure of sitting next to Mr. Palladino for the game. So, that was interesting. I didn't tell him that I was going to be going, so it was a surprise to him.
That was a pleasure?
It was, actually. I met his son. And I brought my son, too. And you guys, back on the agenda, you guys will be revoting the budget tonight. And there's been an awful lot of work put into it. And I'm sure there's going to be a presentation, so I don't want to spill any beans on that. But a lot of work went into it, and I'm actually pretty optimistic about it.
A lot of your work went into it.
Well, that's it. And it's interesting, I was just telling people, it always falls, for some reason, that the meeting right after the election, the newcomer always has to vote on a budget that they had nothing to do with. So, I've been there. But I did want to just confirm, clarify, I know I've sent messages to some of you folks earlier today about making sure that when it is revoted, that you all have had a chance to look at the line items, that you'll be voting on the entire budget, the details and everything, that that's all been done. Has it been done?
We will be getting a presentation, and there will be multiple line items associated with it. It will not be just three numbers.
Yeah, it'll be the whole budget. You're cognizant of that whole budget when you vote on it. That's all I needed to know. And so, you have that now, that actual document, it's like 48 pages. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And your hard work. Is there anybody else who would like to address the committee? Seeing none, we will move on to good news. Does anybody on the committee have any good news they'd like to share? Yes?
I went to the DECA home show, the open house, with some of my family members, and it was an absolutely incredible show that they put on. They had a ton of people walking through, and just the students represented, as always, this district so well. So, I just want to say kudos to them, that it was seriously a great presentation that they did. And thank you to all the companies that participated.
Absolutely. There were about 600 visitors, I understand, which was, I think, probably exceeded their expectations, but it was a great success, yes. Anything else? Mr. Lazarus. I don't want to steal your thunder or step on any of your toes, but I was at the groundbreaking for the Cranberry Bog this morning. And the middle school students that did the introductions were terrific. We moved a pile of dirt around out there, and I guess in another month or so, we're going to have the beginnings of a Cranberry Bog. And I understand it's the only one anywhere, only school anywhere, that has its own working Cranberry Bog. So, I would like to congratulate the staff, and especially the students, that are in the STEAM Academy that put this all together, because it was, it's very heartwarming to see that they're doing this. And educationally, it is a very worthwhile project. Thank you. I completely concur with my colleague. I was also privileged to be there. I think, perhaps you shouldn't be surprised, but I'm always incredibly gratified to see such articulate presentations by young people. They were the stars of the show, but behind the scenes, there were some awfully dedicated educators, and that's not to be forgotten as well. So, it was an outstanding event, and it bodes well for what we're going to be seeing on Viking Drive in a relatively short order. Anybody else with some good news? We all set? Nicole, anything from the high school?
Uh, a moment.
Okay. All right. We are privileged tonight to have the global education team present to us students and faculty from Cape Verde. We were, had the fun, at least, I think all of us had fun, even sharing a meal with them just an hour ago. So, without any further ado, I'd like to have the chairman of their English department, João Paul, stand up, introduce himself, and introduce the rest of your team. Please do so. The microphone is right down there.
Hello, my name is João Paul. I'm the head of English department in Cape Verde. We are here to visit our school community, to know more about your culture and gain more knowledge about your culture. And we thank you also for the reception, the way you treating us here. And I hope, I believe, I know, our school doesn't have the same condition yours has, but I hope in the future, we'll be like you, because you have, I can't say perfect, but you have great condition here for teaching, and your students are blessed in that. I will start presenting my team. First, I have an English teacher, name it, João José. Come on. Please.[734.32][734.32](APPLAUSE). Then, Ossila Dora, also an English teacher.[743.82][743.82](APPLAUSE). And then, the students, please stand up and present yourself, yeah. Rosana?
Good, I'm Rosana. As you know, I'm from Cape Verde, and I am like here.
Uh, next.
Um, Lirada, and thanks for the reception.
Reception?
Karen, thank you. I'm Elizabeth, and I'm glad to be here with you.
Hi, my name is Rosana. I'm Cape Verdean, and I'd like to be here with you. My name is Lirada, and thanks for the reception. Karen, thank you.
Hi, I'm Lisa, and I'm fourth for Cape Verde.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
I also want to thank Mrs. Andrews and Mrs. Bajoli. They're here guiding these people through this very cold weather. For those of you who don't know, it's about 90 degrees in Cape Verde right now, and it's probably about 40 degrees here. So, that transition has been difficult, and they were in Boston most of today feeling that cold. So, our sympathies, it will get warmer. As I said to one of the students in New England, we just say, if you don't like the weather, wait a minute. In Cape Verde, we wish we were in Cape Verde now with your 90 degrees, but welcome. And Mrs. Andrews, Mrs. Bajoli, anything you'd like to add about your trip?
I will.
Or their trip, I should say, not your trip.
We just want to say welcome to all the participants who are here with us, and we're having a great time with them. And they'll be with us until next week, through next week. And on Sunday, we are having a big get-together at the onset VFW with the onset Cape Verdean festival group is putting together a nice dinner at 4:00. And everybody in town is welcome. Anybody is welcome to join us to that.
Wow.
5:00. Sorry. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody on the committee like to ask any of these fine people? Any questions? I'd just like to welcome them to our country and to know how much the town of Wareham has been influenced by the Cape Verdean culture. There was a very, very strong connection between Wareham Public Schools and the Cape Verdean community. And I've probably been here longer than anybody. You know, we still had horse-drawn wagons when I started teaching here. But there has always been a very, very strong connection, and you have a very rich culture that we really appreciate bringing to our school. So, we want to thank you for what you and your ancestors have done to make our town a better place to live. So, thank you.[976.32][976.32](APPLAUSE). Anybody else? Well, I just want to reiterate how wonderful it is to have you here. I think my colleague said it better than I could, because I've only been here 20 years. But it's very clear to me that some of the very positive aspects of Wareham culture is because of the Cape Verdean influence. So, don't underestimate the impact that you and past generations of Cape Verdeans have had on the town of Wareham. We hope you have a wonderful time, and if there's anything we can do to make your time here more fun, and more productive, and more enjoyable, we would love to know about it. So, welcome and thank you.
Thank you.[1028.82][1028.82](APPLAUSE).
Next on the agenda, we had an extraordinary winter. And to get through extraordinary winters requires extraordinary efforts. And some efforts are larger and more important than others, although all are appreciated. For that reason, we have some very valuable members of the Wareham School District here. And I'd like to turn it over to our superintendent to say special thanks.
I would like to invite Mr. Tatro to come forward. And while he's coming forward, we sent a letter to the bus drivers and the monitors, thanking them for their hard work this winter. Being a bus driver is not just a job, it's an adventure. And I think it's very safe to say that driving a bus this winter has been quite an adventure. The job you have done to ensure the safe transportation of our students during the winter months is very much appreciated. There were times when some of the roads' conditions may have been less than desirable, but our students were brought to school and returned home safely. So, thank you very much. And at this time, for the bus drivers and monitors who are here, we call your names. We'd like you to come forward, because we very much appreciate your effort, your hard work. We could not have done it without you this winter. Microphone.
As much as I would like to have all of my staff here, unfortunately, they were not all able to make it, I do intend to acknowledge all of them by reading their names tonight. And if they're here, please come down. My name is Jeff Tatro. I'm the transportation manager, and I am proud of my entire staff, not just worth they do every day, but especially during the difficult winter that we did have, and some difficult road conditions, and some spontaneous ice and snow that no one had predicted. So, when I call you, if you're here, please come down. Drivers. Donna Gregory, Judy Stringer, Pat Gomes, Elaine Knight, Laura Atwood, Corinne Linehan, Ramona Ahern, Marie Ferrera, Thomas Young, Penny Andrade, Wendy Schulenberg, Lisa Laniers, Lynn Butler, Peg Peacock, Lori Ellis, Dawn Swedco, Richie Souza, Tracy McGraw, Mary Carbone, Dawn Gilbert, April Barrows, Danielle Jenkins, Misty Callanan, Gayla Sprague, John Macklin, Lisa Fernald, Joey Rogers, Stephen Boyarsky, Ronald Yancy, Michelle Dunphy, Peg Ryan, Dave Herndon, Robert Trentholm, and Michelle Moses. Along with all these drivers, we have monitors to make sure that everything runs smoothly. So, starting with the monitors, Diane Clark, Ann Cox, Maria Rodolfo, Robin Viveros, Danielle Gilbert, Paul Dooley, Claire Steen, Renee Buck, Kathy McDonald, Cheryl Rowe, Kathy Baptiste, Kyle Conley, Hannah Fernald, James Milney, Michelle Karan, Tanya Johnson, Carol Carlstrom, and Susan Beal. In addition to our regular bus staff, we have office staff as well, who without them, you know, I apologize, I forgot one driver, Linda Martin, who isn't here, but she is just as valuable as everybody else. So, I apologize, I left Linda off that initial list. We have office staff as well. Ted Nagel, Bill Roy, and John Kelly. And in addition to me, the absolute heart of my department is Vanessa Coles, who[1267.66][1267.66](APPLAUSE), who without Vanessa, would not run smoothly on a daily basis. So, Vanessa, just come down, just once.[1278.32][1278.32](LAUGHTER). So, to my staff, thank you publicly for everything that you do on a daily basis.[1296.66][1296.66](APPLAUSE). And I know, I know the next presentation is for the custodians, but I do have one. And Barbara, you're fantastic as well, but you can come down with your middle school staff. But thank you for what you do for my department as well.[1311.32][1311.32](APPLAUSE).
I just need to tell you a very short anecdote. I am lucky enough to also be an occasional bus driver, and I went home one night, a couple of years ago, and I said to my wife, and she's noticed I've had a lot of very responsible executive positions, and I said to her, you know, today I went across the Bourne Bridge with the wind blowing and a bunch of people, parents' kids behind me in the mirror, and I realized that I was doing the most responsible thing I'd ever done in my career. That feeling is what these people experience every day, and unless you do it, you really don't know what it's like to have a whole bunch of people's kids looking you, that you're looking at in the mirror. It's an incredibly important, responsible job. I feel it when I do it, and I really appreciate it when you do it.[1380.82][1380.82](APPLAUSE).
Next, I'd like to invite the principals down. They'll be introducing their custodial staff that are able to be here tonight. And so, the letter, we've all heard the saying, "Without you, we could not have been able to." If there were one statement that would convey our gratitude, it would be, "For without you, we would have not been able to safely open our schools during the past several months. This winter has been filled with challenges, endless work, and sleepless nights. Your hard work and dedication have been outstanding. So, thank you. There were many days this winter when you left the snow piled in your own driveways or sidewalks and came to work to shovel and move snow, and then you went home to do more." So, thank you very much. We appreciate it, and we have a picture that just typifies the amount of snow they had to move this winter. So, if I could have, Mr. Palladino will start, then we'll just follow with middle school, elementaries, and cooperative school.
And that picture is actually, excuse me, a picture of the back of the high school. And I think it's atypical for almost every emergency exit in every building in the Wareham Public School System. That is a picture of a domestic snow lawa that is always have to use. We have quite a few of them. And if you take a look at the door, the door is approximately six and a half feet tall, and you can see that the snow has drifted well above the door, and you can see all the work that had to be done for that specific door. And we have about 22 of those doors that they had to do. This was one particular storm. So, certainly, I want to recognize, we have Gary McNeil and Walter Murphy from the high school, and want to recognize those two folks that are here today. Renee Nascimento is our head custodian. He is at a funeral with one of our custodians, John Duffy. They both couldn't be here. And also, want to mention Richard Cleveland, who was out ill today. So, if Gary and Walter can come on up, thank you very much.[1514.82][1514.82](APPLAUSE).
So, from the middle school, during the storms, I drove up to the school on a few occasions, and I could see behind the snowbanks, I figured the custodians are back there somewhere, because I can see the snow flying in the air. And sure enough, on the little John Deere tractor, they were back there. On some days, when it was almost impossible to get to the buildings, I still don't know how you did it. And I also want to recognize them for the great job they do at keeping this building beautiful for the rest of the school year. Jamie Andrews, who did a fantastic job as acting head custodian for a period of time.[1604.82][1604.82](APPLAUSE). And James, better known as Jimmy Kooch.[1658.32][1658.32](APPLAUSE).
Hey, give that to me. Good evening. For Minutet Forest, I also would like to thank my custodians. They could not be here this evening, but I want to acknowledge Paul Gould, who's my head custodian. He's ill, cannot be here this evening. Bruce Denson is the lead custodian, and he's been filling in during Paul's absence. Bruce's mother is ill, so he could not be here this evening. And I gave the opportunity for Bill Alfonso and George Maderos to come, but they chose to stay back and work on their cleaning duties this evening, so I'd like to thank them. Minutet Forest, as you know, is tricky to get into with that hill, so I'd also like to acknowledge the maintenance staff, who had to plow and sand that hill so cars could get up and into Minutet Forest. So, I would like to thank them for their hard work, because it was a very difficult season this year.
Good evening, and I would like to thank the custodians from the DeCA Elementary School. This evening, we have Ray Mattos here. He is, he actually shares his time between DeCA School and the middle school.[1746.82][1746.82](APPLAUSE). Thank you, Ray. Frank Santos, our lead custodian, was unable to be here this evening, and I, too, had some staff members that were attending a funeral tonight, so we thank William Fafard and Rosie Holmgren for their work as well.
I'd like to thank Ed Batterton, who is the custodian at the East Wareham Partnership, also at the Multi-Service Center. Right now, he's cleaning after our night school program. But Ed, even though he works at night, he would always come back 5:00, 5:30 in the morning after it snowed and make sure sure that the doorways were cleared, and the stairs were cleared, and the ice melt was down. Thank you, Ed.
So, I would just like to add, from central administration, our thanks for Ed Batterton, because he also does the central administration building, and he's rescued me on more than one occasion, I've been locked out or my car broke down. But, and I'd also just like to explicitly, I know Joan mentioned him, but also just mention the fields and ground staff, James Moran, Robert Holmgreen, and Stephen Ramsey, who've done a phenomenal job plowing us out and keeping, you know, the buses and the schools, and making sure schools could open on more than one occasion, so thanks to them.
Thank you.
We'd just like to suspend the meeting for about five minutes, so we can personally thank the people who have come here tonight. Sippy cups. I used to call them with my kids. Sippy cups.
Usually, we say that about Mr. Swett.
Usually, there's more respect for the chair.
He's just the chair now.
Not always, Mr. Swett.
Dr. Sylvia needs to then come back to it.
Okay, next on the agenda is the minutes of the meeting of March 18th. I hope everybody's had an opportunity to review them.
I'm moved that we accept the minutes of March 18th as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
That was Mrs. Vugan for second. Any discussion? All those, all those who approve?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, no abstentions? Would you like to abstain? You're not required to.
Oh, I said aye.
Oh, you said aye, okay.
You said aye, okay. That was 5-0-0. Mrs. Gomes-Viera. There she is. Next on the agenda is the request by the class for the 2016 prom.
Where?
I didn't see it.
I saw it.
Lake Pearl Luciano. Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. I'm going to turn the mic over to Mariah and Aria, who are our prom committee chairpersons, and Aria, who is our social chairperson.
Okay, so, we're requesting to have our prom at Lake Pearl Lucianos in Rantham, which is 40 minutes away. It's about $7,500, and we've already fundraised over $6,000 and have five fundraisers already planned.
The date of the event will be May 7th, 2016.
From 6:00 to 11:00, and it's a Saturday.
Thank you. Any questions on the committee? Mrs. Vugan.
How did you go about choosing this location?
We actually independently researched multiple places, including Indian Pond. Most places don't do Saturdays. This place was one of our places that did a Saturday in our range, and me and Mariah went up about two weeks ago, met with the lady, viewed the venue, and it fit all our requirements.
Great. Can you tell me about transportation for students that 40 minutes is a while? So, do you have plans for transportation if some students don't have their own?
We can do that on a case-by-case basis. Most kids will take a limo with their group of friends, but we can also look into if kids say they can't, we'll help them.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Well, I, I'm sorry, didn't see that finger of yours, Mr. Lazarus.
Leave it alone, Mel.
I'm not going to say a word. Just so you know, folks, the first prom that we had at Lake Pearl was in 2001, that was my, one of the classes I was advisor for. They put on a fabulous program. Yes, and I know they're 40 minutes away, it's not a hard 40 minutes, it's only a few minutes off of 495. I think you're going to have a great time, they really do a great job out there, and they know us, and they like us, so.
Thank you so much.
You should have a great time.
Anybody else? I admire the research you've done, I admire the fundraising you've done, and I hope you have a great time. I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. I know it's a long way away, but you'll have a great time.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. The next item is acceptance of gifts.
I have three gifts to be accepted. The first is $1,000 from teacher John Wilson to the high school for new textbooks and supplies for the AP courses offered in the history department.
Move you accept?
Second.
Just one question, the, the acceptance of something like this, does that go through the curriculum department?
No, this did not go through the curriculum department.
Should it?
No.
We have a policy on all materials, we'll just have to follow the policy.
So, the contents of these books are known to us?
Yes.
And they are consistent with the curriculum frameworks, et cetera?
Yes, that would be true.
Okay, so, in fact, they've been reviewed?
Yeah.
Okay. Any discuss, further discussion? I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Thank you, next.
$750 from the Wareham Athletic Association and the Wareham Viking Athletic Booster Club to the high school track and field team toward a new record board at the high school gym.
So moved.
Second.
The Booster Club, 90% of the money that is raised goes to the specific sport that raised it, and then 10% goes into a general fund. Is, is this money coming out of the general fund?
This would be my assumption, yes, that it's coming out of the general fund and not specific.
Because otherwise, the track team could spend it as they saw fit.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, how much, how much was it?
$750.
Do we have any idea what the balance is in that account at the moment?
I don't.
Mr. McMillan, any idea? Now, having, having asked Mr. McMillan, it's an entirely unfair question, because it's actually not part of his finances. Mr. Palladino? Do you have any idea what the balance is in the general fund from which this money would be coming?
From the Booster Club?
Yes.
It's significantly more than the $750 they're donating, I would estimate it probably around $6,000 to $7,000.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Thank you.
And finally, a Casio 61 keyboard from Maia Rodrick, a professional musician and native of Wareham to the Wareham Middle School, and this is to keep music in the middle school by assisting students with the acquisition of musical instruments.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Many thanks for these contributions. The, there is a request for display of a plaque at the Wareham Middle School Gymnasium by the JBA. Do you have, do you like to talk about this?
Yes. Mr. Fons has approached us from the JBA to request a plaque be presented to Mr. Lewis of, of, of Wareham. This will be in memory of his wife, who passed away several years ago and was an avid supporter. If approved, this will be installed prior to the December games, this will be placed on the wall as you walk down the hallway in, to the gym, and we have talked to Mr. Minkel, and he has approved this, and so now it comes to the committee for their approval, since it will be mounted on the wall.
Comments? Yes.
So, the question that I have is this, being in the recognition world of fundraising, not that I take anything away, and I think that the contributions of the husband and wife absolutely are, it should be recognized. The question that I have is the whole opening up a can of worms, meaning that recognition plaques and dedications usually go through, there's a criteria by which you decide on how it happens and how it doesn't, and I wanted to make sure that, that somehow we're doing something like that, or it's already there, because once you put one up, then, you know, why do you say no to another, and another, and another, that there needs to be some sort of formal process by which this is how a plaque is decided, or a naming opportunity or whatever, does that exist today?
We have a policy for naming.
Yes.
I would think would be kind of like the same thing, but it's really not the same thing, because they're not naming anything, they're just putting up a plaque on the wall. We've got so many plaques at the high school for any number of different things, so I don't know.
And, and I think that's the point, again, not, it's just, we need to be very thoughtful, because you don't want our schools, even though I truly believe in naming opportunities and bringing in more revenue into the school, and hopefully, we can create something like that one day, but, but you don't want all of a sudden your schools to then become a place of plaques all of, and it's a place of plaques all of, and it's, and it just doesn't make sense anymore. And so I just, I'm hoping that we continue to be very thoughtful around how something is approved and not approved so then we don't get into that kind of situation.
Mr. Minkle, would you join us at the table, please? I, I share some of my colleagues' concerns. I had exactly the same reaction that Dr. Sylvia had, which is, I know we have a policy for naming because I remember when that was generated, but I don't think this is exactly the same thing. So my question for you is, when you think of your building, and I'm sure you know it very well, how many plaques are hanging on the wall that are similar to this?
There wouldn't be many plaques that are similar to the one that they're asking to have, but we have different parts of the building, including the auditorium that we're sitting in, that have been dedicated to people that have been involved with, with our kids over the years.
So we do have some dedication. I'm differentiating between naming, okay?
Right. So, so the gym itself is, is dedicated to a beloved teacher that was in the school system for almost forty years. This auditorium is dedicated to a former superintendent. This would, this plaque would be really rather unique for us.
So it, it is not per se a dedication?
It's not.
It is, it's simply honoring a contribution.
Right. And, and the rationale, when the superintendent approached me about this, and Kenny Fons called, was basically that we're, we're giving a nod to a family and to a person that served our youth. And we've had more than likely hundreds and hundreds of kids that have played in the JBA over the years. It's given them a purpose, it's given them an activity, it's kept them, in some cases, out of trouble. It's given them direction, and it's really a recognition of that.
And given the fact that I think all of us who know Mr. Fons have a great deal of respect for his, for his contribution as well as his judgment, my inclination is to, is to say, you know, if he thinks it's a good idea and you think it's a good idea, then it's a good idea.
Right.
On the other hand, I'm also inclined to say, even if it delays it a little bit, if we had a policy.
Sure.
So that we were consistently honoring in a manner that made sure that we didn't get uncomfortable with another request.
Right.
That maybe that would be a good idea, even if it ended up delaying slightly this, this plaque from being hung.
Right.
And what I'm making clear is, I don't want anybody, at least from my perspective, to have the view that we think this is a bad idea. We just want a context for it so that we can act appropriately in the future.
Understood. And I guess the only other comment I would make, Jeff, is that the, for this particular school, it's appropriate because JBA kids are basically being reached at the middle level.
And they play here.
And they play here and they practice here. So that's why, in a way, it's uniquely appropriate.
I completely understand.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Well, you know, I don't have a problem with moving forward so that, you know, we have some kind of a, if not a policy, a procedure. But I don't think we should do it at the expense of this request. I think this is just a request to, to honor some people that have been very, very instrumental in the JBA and as the JBA has been very instrumental to the young people of Wareham. So I don't have a problem with moving forward with determine, developing some kind of procedures. I don't know if we need a policy. But I don't think it should be at the expense of this request here. So I would, I would move that we approve this request as, as presented. I'll make that as a formal motion.
Okay, do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? Yes.
Mr. Chair. When taking a look at this request, it says that, that, that the plaque will be put up before a JBA game in December. And so we are in April? I want it to be July already, but.
It's definitely not July.
Right. And so I can understand my colleagues', you know, concern. Let's not hold this up, but we are, we're, it's until December. This has nothing to do with the individuals associated with this. I think that the concern that I have as we get into could be a situation where, that it's a subjective argument where you have the contributions of another, and there is questioning on why this person isn't recognized. And forget about JBA, it could be multiple things. It could be our, you know, the tennis coach, you know? Subjective argument that, I don't know if it should be, if he should be recognized or not. But, but there could be someone else who basically says the contributions of, and sorry, Jeff, I'm just using you as an example. The contribution should be.
He would need more years as the coach.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, I would, you know, always be on the side. No way should we. That is all I'm saying in this situation, is that it, you know, not saying that this is not more than worthy and probably long overdue. I just, I think that it's very, very important that we don't get into a situation of not having a procedure or a policy around this piece in place because then we could get into a situation where it's much more difficult than this would be. But there is a, a motion and a second.
There is a motion and a second. I have a question, and it's, it's a fundamental question. As my colleague, Dr. Sylvia, says, maybe we don't need a policy. What was it that caused you to think you needed to bring this in front of the school committee to begin with? Why didn't you think you or the superintendent had the authority to simply hang something on the wall?
I, I think probably for the same, same reason that Rhonda's bringing up. You know, just to make sure that we were going through a, some form of a procedure.
You didn't want to set a precedent.
Correct.
You were uncomfortable with that.
Right. And, and you know, the other thing I would say, and I'm, and I'm not trying to defend this or, you know, to turn it into, you know, something that seems like I'm fervently behind. I'm behind it for philosophical reasons. But if they had asked me to put the plaque in the foyer of the school, you know, I don't think that would have been acceptable. The fact that it's near the gym because this is where the activity took place, and this is where all of the time was dedicated to the kids, it, it seemed, you know, it makes sense.
Yeah, I'm, I'm actually sitting here thinking that naming, that should come to the school committee. Hang, you guys hang lots of things on the wall.
Right.
And I'm not even sure that this isn't sort of micromanaging the principal, or maybe this, or maybe the superintendent to, for us to be into this, in this situation. Madam Superintendent, do you have a view on this? Do you, do you, would you like the school committee to weigh in on this issue?
No, I would have just hung it.
I would have before you started this debate.
No, actually, I think that it goes back to the building principal as it is, is his building. Certainly, given the fact that kids are here, they've been a very avid supporter of our students, I think it's a, a nice tribute. And I would like to see that move forward.
So I'm a little uncomfortable setting the precedent of having to bring this to the school committee. I, I'm perfectly comfortable with the building principal deciding, you know, what gets hung on the wall. And if the superintendent goes by one day and says, why'd you hang that on the wall? Then maybe they'll have a discussion, but it doesn't need to come before the school committee. But I may be in the minority on that, so I will ask.
Well, it did.
Excuse me?
Well, it did.
Correct. So, so.
We can't unring the bell right now.
Yeah, we can, actually.
Well, maybe we can.
We can. So I'm, if, if the person who made the motion would like to withdraw the motion.
Oh, withdraw the motion.
Okay, will we draw the second?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I, I'm going to suggest to the superintendent that, that this, this can be handled by school administration, and we are very comfortable with you making that decision. And if for some reason in the future, the school committee thinks you've done a terrible job of who, of putting things on the walls, we can take that up as a policy.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Minkle.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
And congratulations to the family and the plaque that's going up.
Yes, and our best to Mr. Fons.
Okay.
Oh, wow, that's your discretion. Next on the agenda is the revote of the fiscal year sixteen school budget. And I will turn it over to the superintendent and our very capable business manager, Mr. McMillan. We do have a handout, which I assume everybody has in front of them.
Good evening, school committee.
Good evening.
We put together a PowerPoint for you that will go over the budget, where we're at, what the reductions are. And at any time, please ask questions. We're happy to stop and answer any questions that you may have. So as you look at our student enrollment, currently, our student enrollment is twenty-seven hundred and eleven students. We employ four hundred and twenty-eight FTEs. We offer a wide variety of opportunities, educational opportunities for our students and a wide variety of experiences. Our class sizes are in the low twen, to mid twenties in our elementary schools, middle school, and our high school as well. Students have an opportunity to explore a rich curriculum. And currently, our proposed budget is twenty-seven, twenty-seven million, eight hundred forty-two thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars. That was the original budget. We then began the budget process. And as we began the budget process, we based the principals, directors, as well as our budget subcommittee, we based our construction of this budget on our pillars of the school system. On November twelfth, the school committee met with the administration as we set our priorities. The first priority was to provide students with an opportunity for a high-quality education in a safe and secure environment. We also needed to maintain compliance with regulations as well as meeting contractual obligations. We knew we wanted to implement innovative strategies for, for providing services for our students, and we needed to address some capital needs in this budget. The original budget request, as I said, was twenty-seven million, eight hundred forty-two thousand, nine hundred eighty-six dollars. And on March twenty-third, the committee voted a budget of twenty-seven million, three hundred twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars. This year, we've experienced reduction in revenue that we've received from school choice monies as well as the state cut the kindergarten grant monies during the year. We've received word that the kindergarten grant may be totally reduced in the FY sixteen fiscal year. Our out-of-district costs continue to rise, and our revenues continue to decline. So earlier in this year, our budget preparations started, and through the hard work in our administration, we recommended the proposed budget. This was not adopted. We've had further reductions, and unfortunately, we need to reduce further. So working in collaboration with the town administrator, members of the Board of Selectment, Board of Finance, our school business manager, the superintendent's budget subcommittee, I bring to the committee a budget request of twenty-seven million, one hundred thirty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars. It's broken down with net of twenty-five million, seven hundred sixty-one thousand, seven hundred ninety-three dollars, non-net, which gives you the total budget. To arrive at this, here are the major accounts.
So the, in keeping with the school budget policy, which requires that any transfers over five thousand dollars or five percent between sub, the accounts or major accounts have to be approved by the school committee. We presented the budget here in the major accounts as reflected in that budget policy. And obviously, there is more detail behind these numbers, but it would just, we run, we run the risk, the more detail we go into, the more we're on the risk of identifying an impact on individual employees, and we need to be careful of that. But at this level, you can see that in administration and instructional leadership, there's a reduction in over two hundred thousand. We see the increase in classroom and specialist teachers, reflects salaries increasing. There's a, a reduction in guidance counseling and testing, an increase in the instructional materials. And these, all these changes are from the FY fifteen budget as it currently is and reflecting any transfers which have taken place to this point. Also slight reduction in insurance, retirement programs, and other operation and maintenance will go up. Other teaching services will go down. The largest increase is obviously in our payments to out-of-district schools, which is one of the issues that we've come back to repeatedly. Professional demo element is down, however, that is balanced against sort of refocusing of the grants, which has been led by the curriculum department, and an increase in pupil services. And then the non-net school spending budget is pupil services, which for us is entirely transportation, and that sees the reduction of almost eighty thousand dollars. Two parts to that. One is part of the reduction in transportation, which I think the superintendent will come on to. Part of it is also that as we work with the town to merge the, a bus garage with the municipal maintenance, some of our costs are transported over to, are transferred over to the town. And with that goes the money to pay for those costs. And that's, that's twenty thousand dollars. That's, we don't have to pay for the cost, but we don't get the budget either. So it's kind of net effect of zero for us. And so that, the entire increase then for us from FY fifteen to FY sixteen is two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars.
To arrive at the number, what we will propose would be a fifty thousand dollar cut in transportation. Transportation will be continued to be provided to all students living over one mile. Students living one mile or less will not be provided with bus transportation. This will affect two hundred and fifty-seven students, grade K through twelve. There'll be a total staff reduction. This is between administrative staff, retirements, some realignment, totaling seven hundred and eighty-five thousand, five hundred and thirty-two dollars. And we will be closing east. When we make these reductions, we come up with our budget recommendation. So what's left? You know, when we first started this, we shared with people we were committed to provide support for our students. Because of this, we will have very few reductions in the teaching staff or paraprofessional staff. We've prioritized the fact that we believe teachers need to be in front of students, and this budget provides that. We currently have mini-program opportunities for our students. Our class sizes remain in the low twenties. We have academic programs such as the STEAM Academy, dual enrollment at both eighth grade and at the high school. And we believe our students will experience and are experiencing outstanding educational opportunities. We believe that this budget for FY sixteen will continue to support our students and provide them with opportunities that they so richly deserve. This budget also provides extracurricular activities, and we are in social and emotional well-being. While there are some reductions, we're not happy with reductions. We will not be transporting all students. We understand that this is an inconvenience. And if we have a winter like we've experienced this winter, we will make accommodations. But this budget that we bring to you supports. this budget that we bring to you supports our students. So, I would ask if there are any questions, and if not, I would ask for a motion to please vote the budget.
Michael, would you put back the line item budget that compares the two years, please?
Yep.
And Kim, when you, when you say, when you reference class sizes, those are medians, averages. There are obviously some that are quite a bit smaller and some that are quite a bit larger. So, that's the average you're talking about?
Yes.
Right? Okay. And just to reiterate before I give my colleagues the opportunity to ask questions and make comments. So, the key here is, we are, you are proposing that we not transport any child that is less than a mile from their school, and you are, you have really minimized the number of classroom teachers that are impacted by these cuts. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, that's true.
Okay. Okay, I'll open it up to the committee. Anybody have any comments or questions? Nicole?
When you were saying you would make accommodations in bad weather, how, do you have any idea of how you'd be able to do that? Because most of the buses are full. So, do you mean trying to squeeze on more kids somehow, or just, what would you plan on doing?
What we would look at is bringing in a sub-driver with another bus and set up some mega stops.
Okay, thank you.
Can you talk a little bit about the line item for out-of-district costs, and what is causing the increase of the 360,000?
Yes. What we've noticed is a couple of things, actually. Out-of-district placements are able to raise their prices. There are some caps, but those costs continue to rise, and we're merely billed. The other thing is, we've had several students that have been placed in our district that are out of dis, that are already out of district that we need to absorb the cost. We also have some students, and we're looking at programming. We're looking at how do we build capacity with the staff we have to meet our students' needs. As we're working on that, we still have some students that we need to service, and servicing them means out-of-district. However, I will tell you that our special ed. department has been working very hard, diligently, actually, to develop some programs to meet the needs, and we are looking at ways to bring students back.
Could you clarify one of the statements you just made, which was, could you give me an example of how an out-of-district placement goes from, I don't know, Brockton to Wareham? Is it literally as simple as a family moves from Brockton to Wareham, and they happen to have an out-of-district student, or is it more complicated than that?
Well, it could be like that, or it could be a student that is in Child Protective Services. Is that what we call it? Child Protective Serv, um, DCF, that just have a foster parent here, and if the foster parent is here, we then get the cost.
So, they're, these, these children had a foster parent who happened to live in another city, and they changed who their foster parent was, and that new foster parent happened to live in Wareham?
Correct.
Okay. Is, which is the more common, what I just described, or literally a family moving from Brockton to Wareham?
What you just described.
The foster-child situation?
Yes.
Thank you. Anybody else? Questions? Cliff?
Yeah, I, I know I'm not gonna, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make some comments, and I know that I'm gonna be in the minority, and I'm not looking to change anyone's vote, but I think that I would like to have both the board, a new member, and anyone that might be interested, the public, know what my thinking is on how I view this.
Take your time.
When we voted the first round of cuts, I was still chair, and I approved the initial budget, and then I did, although I did hole my nose, approved the first round of cuts. But I'm having a very difficult time supporting this cut round, for a variety of reasons. But first of all, I want to commend the administration, the Budget Advisory Committee, for the work that they've done on this. And I also want to acknowledge that the process was collaborative, that the boards and the town administrator worked together to try to come up with the best possible solution. My problem is on just a couple of issues, and one most recently, that I'll explain a little bit later. But the, the good thing about the, the cut strategy that we see here this evening is that it is preserving the integrity of the classroom teacher and the classroom. And I think that that's been our priority in maintaining adequate class size and making sure that we're not demolishing our professional staff in terms of classroom teachers. I basically have three areas that I have a problem with, and I have been very vocal with my colleagues, but I just want everyone else to know why I probably cannot support this round of cuts. For me, our main priority is to make sure that our children are safe. And I know that we have a count, and we know how many children that we're affecting by this one-mile strategy. I just think by having all our students walk a mile to school, or a certain amount of them, a portion of them, I should say, is an accident looking for a place to happen. I can't sign off on that. I think we have an obligation to provide safety for all of our students, and we have to keep in mind that we live in a working class community. These parents are going off to work very early, and when we were busing our children, they were reasonably secure with the fact that those children were going to arrive at school safe and arrive home safe, safely. So, I think that, and then, it further gets compounded for me because I have visions of particularly an elementary kid walking down the roads, especially given the winter that we've had. So, I, I just think that the risk doesn't, I mean, the, the benefit in terms of the budget, for me, does not minimize the risk. Second, the second problem I have with the cut strategy is that I'm really not feeling too comfortable with some of the non-teaching personnel that are going to be affected, and I, I think that we're leaving ourselves vulnerable, particularly in the area of special education. And lastly, I didn't have this in my mind when we had our last budget meeting, but I, it's loosely related, Mr. Chair, so just bear with me. It was last week's edition of Wareham Week, and that kind of refocused me, which, and it was an article in last week's Wareham Week that said that Selectmen approve Upper Cape budget. And that raised my awareness antenna, antenna, once again, relative to the lack of equity and parity that we have with Upper Cape. The article highlighted Superintendent Dutch's rationale for overall increases to the Upper Cape budget, which totaled 4.42%, which is a significant increase, and Wareham's increase of 3.23% over last year. I want to be known to anyone listening to this or reading about it in the paper, that I believe in Upper Cape. I believe the service they provide, and they do a tremendous amount of good to our kids, and we need that school. But I, I just feel that if I were the administrator of Upper Cape or on the Upper Cape School Committee, I would do exactly what they do, is come to the Board of Selectmen, and eventually to town meeting, and get their blank check. Because in essence, that's what's happened over the years. They have just basically gotten a blank check. So, what, what bothered me were some of the numbers that were thrown out in the article. The athletic budget increased by 9%. Their athletic budget is 266,214. Wareham's athletic budget is $210,000, supplemented by user fees. And it's interesting that their athletic budget is $266,000, it's 210, and yet we have considerably more sports than they do. The average, the average family is paying well over $200, $200, because they have more than one kid in sports, on user fees. That's not equitable. That's not parity. They also indicated, and this really blew my mind, the 36% increase in student activities, and primarily to fund their skills competition program. Well, the skills competition program at the vocational, technical level is the same as our DECA program that we have here at Wareham High School. And it's interesting that all of the students, all of their activities and their conferences are paid for by the budget. Well, we have a nationally-recognized co-curricular DECA group with over 200 students with a budget allocation of zero. That's not parity. So, currently, we have 20 kids working to fundraise to defray the cost of representing Wareham High at national competitions, and even with all the fundraising efforts, our parents here in Wareham, if they want their child to compete, is going to have to come up with a healthy sum. So, I, I have, I have, what, what really made me aware in reading this article is that for all of our hard work and for all of our efforts, our budget is still inadequate. And so, I, I just think that we have to look at it and, and look at it from a perspective of gold setting and a priority-based budget that the entire town can get behind. I'd be more than willing, I would be very happy if we could take, have an annual, an annual, I don't know what the word is, technique or mechanism in which we would just take the same increase that Upper Cape got. That would make it real easy. So, for these three reasons, I find it very difficult to support this, this cut, this latest cut package. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Any other comments? Mr. Lazarus?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is with great reluctance that I'm supporting this number, but I do share some concerns with my colleague, Dr. Sylvia, specifically with the issue of transportation. But I have another concern with this budget and with the process that we've gone through. I agree with my colleagues that we have had communications with the Board of Selectmen and the town administrator and the FinCom, but they seem to want to do this at their convenience. When we looked at this last budget, this was after emails at midnight, so to speak, from the town administrator to our superintendent, if I am right in that. This isn't the way to build a budget. That if the town administration wants to build a budget with us, then it's got to be done in a timely manner and not three weeks before town meeting, which is exactly the way this happened. And it's not, here's your number, now figure it out, which is exactly the way it happened. If members of the Board of Selectmen and Town Administrator were watching this, I hope you'd keep that in mind for next year. We had an all-day budget meeting, and one member of the Board of Selectmen was there for most of the day. One was in and out, and that doesn't appear to be collaboration to me. This is a budget process that we start in the fall, so we can be on top of our dates in December and January, and that's when the collaboration should happen, not in March. So, as I say, I reluctantly support this budget. I certainly want to commend the superintendent, Mr. McMillan, Mr. Sweat, Mr. Flaherty, oh, he's still here, yes, for the work that they've done on this budget, and I think that we've got to go forward from here. I think there's work to be done next year, and I will say this, if we have to come to grips with more issues with transportation next year, I will under no circumstances support a budget that calls, that calls for any more cuts in transportation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else on the committee like to make any comments? I think this major budget account slide is very illuminating. One of the hopefully positive things is that the superintendent and her team have managed to figure out how to cut over $220,000 so that our classroom teachers can have more than, can have $200,000 in increases. That's, that's a very positive achievement, assuming we can still have the kind of leadership, both quantity and quality, that is so crucial to the district. For those of you who are reading between the lines of what I just said, it means we've managed to cut overhead and maintain classroom teachers. I think the rest of the budget is really, you know, trying to deal with the fact that out-of-district costs are significantly higher, and, and we're nibbling away at the rest of the budget to try and offset those. Plus, we did end up with, however meager, at least 255,000 more than level funded, which is what the town initially was requesting from us. I share my colleagues' concerns, but I also believe that, given everything, which is to say, the town also has to function along with the schools, that this is as good as we're going to get in terms of total resources. And I trust our superintendent and her team that the end result will be what the superintendent has outlined, which is more rigor, still high quality, and still enough resources to achieve the goals that I know we all share. But I also am concerned about the future, and I think Mr. Lazarus's comments about we need to be on guard for next year are accurate, especially as we begin a strategic planning process, which will have certain goals related to the education of our children. Anything more you'd like to say, Madam Superintendent? Either in response to the comments that have been made or some afterthoughts?
Yes, thank you. Conversations that I've been having with staff during the past several days, I've predicated with saying, if I lived in a perfect world, I would not be having these conversations with you. However, we don't, and we need to live within our means. What I do believe is we have an outstanding educational program for our students. Is there room for an improvement? Absolutely. And are we making the improvements? Absolutely. But we have quality programs. I'm very proud of our staff. I'm very proud of the hard work and the dedication that they bring to the table every day. And while I agree, cutting transportation is not something I cherish at all, I also know I need to keep teachers in front of students and paraprofessionals in front of students, because what they do in the classroom is vital. I'm hoping that next year, through collaboration and work with the town, I can come to you and say, we would like to restore. That's my dream. But at this point, we have, we are presenting you a very creative option to maintain services for students, as I believe that's our to maintain services for students, as I believe that's our charge. And so I would respectfully ask that you pass this year's budget in the amount of twenty-seven million, one-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars.
I will take a motion to approve the net school spending number of twenty-five million, seven-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand, seven-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed? Any abstentions?
All abstain.
That's four, zero, one. I would like a motion for a non-net transportation budget of one million, three-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I'm opposed.
Any abstentions? No. Four, one, zero. And finally, a motion for a total FY sixteen Wareham Public Schools budget of twenty-seven million, one-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed?
Opposed.
Any abstentions? Four, one, zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for your understanding.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Superintendent, you're on again when you return. In case I forget, I always appreciate seeing school leadership in this, in this auditorium during school committee meetings. And I appreciate it this evening. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I would turn it over to Mr. McMillan to talk about his financial reports.
Good evening. So we have the monthly expenditure report for March. I'm also got, I've also got the revolving accounts, a report and an update on grants, and also some transfer requests. So I'm going to take the monthly expenditure report first and then the transfers. The monthly expenditure report shows us still, overall, still neck and neck with where we were at the same point last year. We're now, we are better reflecting all the outstanding, out-of-district costs. We expect all those POs are now, almost all those POs, I believe, are now in there. So that we are still where we, where we would hope to be is encouraging. There's, you know, there's a, there's a whole lot of different things going on in here. The, I think on transportation, fuel prices being low, although a little bit, but still low is helping us to come on and back where we would expect, hope, expect on budget. We are, classroom, teacher classroom costs are, we have a little bit remaining where we probably would hope to be. There's a couple of areas which I'm hoping to address through the transfers. And really, that's it. I don't know if there's any, any particular questions. Though I should point out that we still have a deficit on our copiers. We're still trying to solve a problem with our POs, which hopefully shall be resolved shortly. Also, our heating and utility prices, particularly heating has, eh, helped us again this, has helped us this year having a fixed in with a contract. And the efforts of the custodians to keep our heating bills down has helped. Any, I don't know if there are any specific questions from the school committee?
Questions? I, yes, I have some. When I go to the DESI website and I look at Wareham's numbers, while overall, when you add all the numbers together, we're, I don't know, seven, eight percent below the state average. One of the things that pops out as being quite high is instructional leadership. And when I look at the instructional leadership, and I'm making the assumption, maybe it's not true, maybe it is true, that when I look at a category here, it corresponds to what the state views for that category as well, the numbers that they use. And some of these descriptions are, to say the least, redundant. Skipping building technology. The second category is school curriculum leaders, department heads, building level. Then we go down two columns after that, two categories after that. Department heads, non-supervisory. One category after that is described as a number of things, curriculum facilitators, instructional team leaders, and department heads, non-supervisory. These, these categories, and I think there's probably even one more example of that at the next, the next page. Yeah, the, the very last category is school building leadership, building level, curriculum leaders, department heads. Why on earth should we have three or four categories that all reference department heads? And why does it say non-supervisory when we know they're supervisory? And of course, we don't have department heads in every building. So what about those descriptions? Are they? I have this feeling you're going to tell me you have no control of those descriptions.
So the, the state requires us to report our expenditure at the end of the year eh, within certain function codes which relate to these headings. So...
So these are state descriptions?
Yes.
No, even so...
But you know, but it's, but how, but it, it's our prerogative how we report them.
No, I understand that part, and that may be an issue.
Yeah.
But you're saying the state has, has redundant descriptions?
So I don't know whether, what other districts are using, and if they're finding that they're useful. But it's something, I mean, it's definitely worth revisiting, also revising how we, I mean, how we present them here. It might be that it's a better way of presenting them. It might be more informative.
Yeah, I mean, maybe since we're in the, we've now concluded, knock on wood, the budget process.
I've got time on my hands. Look, I'm looking for stuff to do, so...
Yeah, maybe. Did you hear that, Madam Superintendent? He's looking for things to do.
Mr. McMillan has died and gone to heaven.
Yeah. So maybe, maybe we could clean up this area?
Yep.
And also make sure that when we categorize a cost, it fairly accurately categorizes that cost.
Yep.
So it, when someone else besides myself, for example, looks on DESI, they don't go, how did that number get so high?
Yeah, exactly.
Because maybe it doesn't truly reflect what's going on in the school district.
And I should say, you know, and I have made this point to DESI representatives, that the guidance on how to allocate expenditure within these functions is a few pages long. And so there is, as, as my impression, my feeling, that there is a lot of subjectivity in determining whether expenditure, which function it falls under, and which major counts. So I think I, I believe there's a risk that we're reporting something is one thing, and another district is reporting it as something else.
I think it's more than a risk. I think it's a certainty.
Yeah, absolutely. So eh, so I just think that has to be borne in mind. And it has, you know, when you look at that number, you need to look at other numbers like administration and classroom teachers and specialists and look at everything alongside it.
Exactly.
And, yeah, so...
Okay, let's, let's try and, for FY sixteen, have that cleaned up a little bit. I was somewhat dismayed to see that we're over budget on substitutes, my favorite line item. I'm just making that comment. I don't expect the business manager to have a solution to that problem. But it's, we're approaching half a million dollars, and that's disturbing to me. But I've said it before. Thank goodness our utility bills were lower than budget. And fi, well, penultimately, the out-of-district costs, they are dramatically changing from month to month.
Yes.
Are you, should I be, I used to be optimistic looking at the numbers. Now I'm concerned looking at the numbers.
Good.
How, you said good?
Yeah, that's where you should be, just for good.
Good, good as in accurate?
Yes.
Yes, right. Do you have an opinion on how we're going to end up in that area? Perhaps our Director of Student Services has an opinion on that as well?
I'm happy to go first, if you like. So I feel like we have a, we monitor very closely where we are on our, our district costs with the Special Ed Director and our District Coordinator. And there is always some fluctuation. We are in the process of applying for a extraordinary relief from the state, which is, we, I think, I can't remember if I've discussed it here, but we've applied to the state
That's an interesting formula.
for circuit breaker, which we'll cover, so, yeah, so if...
So you're optimistic or that, that that special request or that extraordinary relief might actually be available to us?
Yes. Well, as far as we can tell, if you look at the criteria, you have to reach a certain amount of, your costs this year have to be a certain amount of increase from the previous year,
Over the prior year, right.
which we do. And they...
Does it come out of the circuit breaker fund?
No, they set aside, they set aside a separate fund. So the amount of money we receive all depends on how many people apply, how many people then meet the criteria. So...
But we have applied.
We have applied.
And when will we hear?
I think we think in May, is that right?
So I had a brief conversation. We clarified a few points. The gentleman at the pool too said, it looks like we qualify, which, which I thought was quite positive. Usually, they don't say too much. But the exact amount, as Michael said, is only determined once they know who's in the pool. It's, I believe, about three million dollars that are in twenty-two districts that apply.
Sounds like McKinney-Avento.
Yeah, exactly.
They do a simple proportion based on what's available.
Yes.
I can imagine the template that someone uses, the spreadsheet that, that they create.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's at least reasons for some optimism.
And yes.
But I won't ask you to estimate how much that might be worth since...
Yeah.
I might...
If we go by last year, if we, excuse me, if we go by last year, to be in the neighborhood, it's seventy-five to eighty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, great. And finally, pupil transportation remains slightly ahead of budget.
Yes.
Are you, can I be optimistic about that line item?
You can be...
We got through the winter, right?
Yeah, exactly. And I think, eh, you know, the bus drivers and mechanics are all doing a great job of eh, looking after the buses. The fuel price has helped a lot. I think that's the primary reason we are where we are. But I sat down with Mr. Tatro this morning. We're reviewing his budget, the projections to the end of the year. We believe we'll come in just, just where we should be, just on budget, under budget, maybe ten, twenty thousand.
Okay. Am I, am I correct that none of these reports talked at all about food services?
The revolving account, the revolving account one, I believe, has a line on food service.
But that's not the whole picture for food services, right?
Eh, it's, it is a very high level, but it is the full number.
Yeah?
It is, yep.
Okay, because I think this committee expressed an interest in periodically,
So...
because it's an important, important line item which has hurt us in the past and we were led to believe things were under control. So you don't need to do it tonight, but at some point, I think it would be good to get some more reassurances.
Yeah, so similar to my conversations with Mr. Tatro, we have a new food service director, which is why...
Yes, I met him. He seems like a really good guy.
Yes, he's, he's got a lot of expertise. He's really keen. He's hardworking. And he's really helping to eh, take the food service department to another level, I think. Eh, so we were reviewing his budget. Food service is always, it's always a difficult one because we rely on reimbursement. And now with the new program, we rely even more because of the community eligibility, almost our entire, eh, revenues from state reimbursements. And we just eh, just a couple of weeks ago, put the January reimbursement in. So we're, so we're always behind. And we are trying to speed it up on our side, and that's one of the things the new food service director is trying to do, is make sure, speed up our part, side of the process.
So you're saying the three-month lag could be less if we move more quickly?
Yep, exactly. So that's part of it. And then, but there's always that lag from the state. But so, looking at the numbers again there, as we project out how much we spend on salaries and eh, I have to say, the cafeteria workers and managers are doing an excellent job. And they're working very hard, serving a lot of new, a lot of students since we introduced a new program. New food service managers also bringing some discipline about how we are, how we're ordering, maximizing the use of the USDA commodities, so the free food that we get from the state and making sure we're using that, and we're able to get it out to students. And that helps us to reduce our costs. So all those things are helping to keep this budget on balance. So you know, as you'll see in the revolving account, we're currently seventy-two thousand to the goods, knowing that we still have February and March reimbursement to come in. So I'm confident about that.
Where is, where is health insurance premiums in that number?
So that's not out yet. That comes out in, at the end of the year. And that goes over to the town.
As part of the in-kind reconciliation?
No, as a...
Separate line?
Separate payment.
Okay. But that's a mystery until we get it.
No, we know, so we keep, we track, some eh, that's something else we look at, so we factor that into our, we know how, because we know how many staff there are, we know what programs are on.
So we can estimate it?
So we estimate it, yep, pretty accurately, because we know, you know, we, we know if they're, what health insurance program they're on. Therefore, we know the employer contribution, and so that's how it's calculated. Especially as much as...
When you think the timing is right, if maybe it's the manager...
So I'm hoping next meeting, because it's May. So we were trying to get in for this meeting, but it was just a bit tight, so...
Thank you. Next.
Mr. Chair, just have a quick question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, just around this, when you're taking a look at network and tech, and telecommunications,
Yep.
does that include anything that breaks down? Is that where that money comes out of?
Does that include?
So if the networking and telecommunications, that if things break down, is that the maintenance of that, that is pulled out of there?
Yep, exactly.
Any concerns there when look, taking a look at where we are?
You know, so we have, we've had in the last year or so hired, well, we replaced one position. We brought in Chris Tahan, who's working in, in the technology team. And we've got some, well, other staff have been there a few years, and they are, they're coalesced into a really excellent, strong team. And I believe they're really making us, our technology more sustainable and able to deal with things when they break down. Unfortunately, internet still goes down. We still have issues. But they are able to get out there and fix them, and they're putting in steps to try and make our system as robust as possible. So if one line goes down, we're able to get another line to come in to backup, which sometimes works, but not always. But I do believe we're getting more robust because, you know, we've got wireless now almost a hundred percent. Well, in this building and at that high school, there's other issues at elementary schools. But eh, you know, it's becoming an integral part of education in the schools. So it's, it has to work like water, you know, you just have to always be there. And I think our technology team are a good job.
That's why we're just taking a look at where we are this year compared to last year. We're down quite a bit, so...
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, so I do have quite a number of transfers this time. So eh, as we're getting closer to the end of the year, there's just some issues tidying up. I'm trying to get ahead of these things, so we're coming to you for transfers before the budgets go in the deficit, before the accounts go in the deficit. I'll just go through each of them quickly. There's five thousand dollars from the testing and assessment salary, which is a position we didn't fill into Business and Finance Services, which covers payroll audit we did at the start of the year and also the end-of-year audit, which we are eh, required to do by the state. Eh, there's also money from that other, that, so that's the first one. Do you want to, I don't know how you want to do this. Should I do one at a time? Do you want to vote on them as we go, or?
That's a good question. I think probably appropriate procedures one at a time.
One at a time. So do you want to, do you want me to sort of introduce each one and then you can vote?
Yes.
All right, so that's the first one.
Mr. Lazarus? You sure? Okay. Go ahead.
So do you want to vote on that first one, the five thousand dollars from testing and assessment to Business and Finance Services?
Okay, motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain? Five, zero, zero. Thank you. Next.
All right, just twenty-four thousand dollars from testing and assessment to building technology, and that's to cover part of professional salaries.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero, thank you.
So the next one is actually just a tidying up, and actually it comes back to your point about getting the function codes right. This is a person who was in teacher classroom, who really should have been under department heads. And so it's seventy-seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars from teacher classroom to K-12 department head salaries.
So when we look at the financial report that you just sent us,
Mm-hmm.
that seventy-seven thousand is still in the teachers?
Teacher classroom, exactly.
Okay. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero.
So the next one is forty-three thousand dollars from the principal's office to networking and telecommunications. That's a saving we got from the amalgamation of the Co-op and the West, a schools, and allowed us to employ a new, a member of the technology team early in the year.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero.
So the next transfer is ten thousand dollars from heating to networking and telecommunications. So that ten thousand dollars is coming out of the, I just wanna highlight, it's coming out of the high school heating, where they've made a lot of efforts to keep their heating bills down, and I know their head custodian, Reni Nasi Mento, has done a great job of switching the heating off, basically to keep that budget down, so thanks to them, the ten thousand would go to networking and telecommunications, and that is in part paying for the project we've had, people doing overtime and all sorts of things to get the wireless completed at the high school in time for the park testing and so on.
Anybody playing that it's cold in the building?
Oh, yeah, the roof, well, the, you know, since we've got the high school roof in, that's a huge, well, actually, I, from what we could tell, when we went up there and looked at the roof, there was a gap at the top of the, the wall, between the wall and the roof that was, that was letting air out, I think they equated, they equated it something like thirty doors open around the building. So having fixed that, that's helping as well to keep, keep the warmth in the building, so.
Okay, because we just heard rumors that you're going around torturing buildings by asking them all to turn down the heat, so.
That's this guy, not me.
Kidding. Motion to approve?
That was Palatino.
Yeah, yeah.
Motion to approve? So moved. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero.
Six thousand dollars from professional development teachers to professional development substitutes. That's just a way to professional development smart town.
So just to be clear, what this is, is we need more money for substitutes for when regular classroom teachers are getting professional development?
Exactly.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero.
Right, just two more. One thousand dollars from heating to personnel to cover ID cards and.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero.
I'm very happy to, the last one, six thousand dollars from teachers in classroom, against the same as we've been able to make in that area to cover legal services for school committee, which is really the negotiations we've had and legal fees.
So moved.
Is it?
Second.
Is it fair to say that all the legal services for the school district are in this one category?
Yeah, 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 it's slightly misleading to say it's just.
No, no, that's okay, so we've consolidated under the school committee, but it could be the superintendent, it could be you.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Okay.
But it's all under that one line.
It's all under that one line item, exactly. Motion to approve? I think it already, sorry?
And you got a second?
And I got a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero, thank you.
Thank you very much. So this, sorry.
So you have three other reports?
Yep.
Um, does anybody have any questions on these other reports? Do you have any comments on these other reports?
Uh, there's just a couple, I guess, one is if we talked about food service already, there's a, the, the format's slightly different this year, we're just in the process of moving to a new accounting syst- uh, system, a, which is why we just have a starting balance and a current balance. I think we're in reasonably good shape, we've got money for this year, we'll have money to start next year to help offset budget costs then. I think it's fine. Unless there's any comments, questions?
Questions, comments?
I have a, a question, oh, on which one? Are we done student activity yet?
Not yet. I'm getting there, I'm going as fast as I can.
I'll wait. I'm all set.
All set. On the transportation revolver?
Yes.
So we've bought our buses?
Yep.
And yet we've still got a hundred and twelve thousand dollars in the revolver, correct?
Yes.
So we're trying to build that buck, back up so we can buy a few more used buses? Um, and those used buses would be, when would the, when is the plan for the, for the warrant article to come before town meeting so that we can get approval to do so?
So if we buy used buses, we don't actually have to go to town meeting?
We just need to go through the town administrator for the purchasing process?
Not even, I mean, we do, we had, the, we have to consult the town administrator for all purchases, because he's the chief procurement officer, but there is no, a, we don't have to get selectmen approval, because our used buses make a legal advice before we did the last one.
I seem to recall that. So what do you anticipate that balance will be at the end of the fiscal year?
It should be, you know, there's some activities and so on are winding down a little bit, so the income is reduced and also the outcome. I, I anticipate it being, I think we put it out at being around eighteen, ninety thousand by the end of the year.
Down from the hundred and twelve?
A little, because we have some expense, some payroll still to go out, some costs, some maintenance.
Okay.
I'm just being, I mean, I'm.
So are you, are you anticipating two or three more used buses between now and the beginning of the school year?
That, that would be great if we could, yes.
Because it's my understanding, even with this revised, um, revised transportation plan for the next school year, the number of buses we'll be able to cut is relatively few, correct?
Yeah, exa- yeah, very, and actually, just on that part of it, what we're hoping to do is where we do reduce, where we do reduce a route, it frees up a bus and a driver that we can use to take back another district route, which we're currently contracting out for. So we might st- you know, and also, you know, so we might still be using those resources.
Bottom line is, you need, you need some newer buses.
Absolutely, even if we reduce the number of buses, we need to replace some of them.
And you anticipate to be able to do that?
I hope so.
Okay. Anything else on the revolvers? Okay.
All right, so, and then grants, we also included an update on grants. There's a lot of information here, a.
That's an understatement.
Yeah. I don't know if there's any particular questions, I would do my best to answer and/or return back.
Have to tell our newest member that the, the meetings are not always an eye test.
Yeah.
Are we, just a quick question, and I, I haven't seen it yet, so you're telling me that we have, at this particular point in time, no Perkins grants, no OCHED grants of any kind on the books?
So the Perkins grant, we don't receive any Perkins grant.
We used to, do you know why we don't now?
I don't, I mean, I don't, it doesn't exist anymore.
Well, it's a redundant, well.
Yeah, it doesn't exist anymore.
It, it's a redundant question.
Yeah, so we do get additional funding through, well, through the money we get from the state for students who are in Chapter Seventy-four courses.
That's, that's not a grant.
No.
Yeah, we, we get, there was a bonus for every single solitary student that we have in Chapter Seventy-four, but that just goes into the general fund, we never even see that, even though it, it's supposed to be extra. See, what it's supposed to be for, and again, I don't want, I don't want to take up a lot of the time, but what it's supposed to be for is the same reason that Upper Cape gets all of this Perkins money is to fund the OCHED portion of that co-curricular, or that curricular activity. So that's why, in essence, we get basically a double reimbursement from the state for every Chapter Seventy-four kid we get. But yet, there is no benefit really to the school department, because it just goes into the general fund. So its, its intended purpose is never used, is what I'm trying to say to you. And there are Perkins grants, but we don't get any, because it all goes up the Cape. Thank you. It's true.
Anybody else on the grant material? Yes.
When you first put this in front of us, the, the report continues to get better and better and better every single month. I have no clue how you continuing, continue to make this even better and even more clearer. I think my question at this point around this, because again, from a grant perspective, when you're talking from a nonprofit perspective, or even a for-profit or a school system, that, you know, that there are constantly monies that you're looking for to be able to bring in, not to supplement the LEA, but just to be able to provide additional programming. But with that, everything that's coming in then has different criteria that then you have to base in reports and all that, so that's just, so everyone knows, I know everyone in this room knows, but everyone outside, that it is unbelievable the amount of management that goes into this. So this document is created by you, but from a management standpoint of the grants, it happens throughout the district. How, how is the communication being managed when it comes to the data points that go back into this?
So the, there are three, actually, you know, so I actually, I have to confess, so I may, I created this spreadsheet, I, that was months ago, and I now just have asked the, there's three, there's three main areas that monitor grants. There's Nancy Rodriguez, who's the secretary in my off, grant secretary in my office, who oversees a couple of grants, and also the beyond school time related grants. Then there's Kathy Blake, who's secretary in the curriculum department, and she overcenters information for curriculum to grants. And also Sandy Sethlini, who's the secretary in the sped department, and she enters all the information in sped grants. So we collate this and they, they collate this information, and they're great for keeping an eye on things and reporting to me if anything's getting a whack. And I meet with them, actually haven't for a while, but trying to meet with them regularly to review where we are on each grant. And they're also meeting regularly, really with the administrators and the instructional leaders who oversee those grants. So it'll be the curriculum director, the curriculum sped director, and also the beyond school time coordinators. And they are, I mean, they're living these grants day to day, and we also, we monitor them here, we also monitor them in the payroll, because a number of staff, uh, obviously staff are paid at a grants as well, and we monitor it that way. So there's kind of a, there's a web of monitoring going on through those three, so my department, curriculum, and special ed, and the beyond school time, so. That's, it's all kinda, there's a lot going on. Does that kinda help?
You answered my question, thank you.
I was shocked to see that Title One is now under, slightly under six hundred thousand dollars. I guess I've been around too long, I remember one was a million four, something like that, I mean, that's, that's really dramatic. Um, that's just a comment. But I was also really surprised that we're still getting fifty thousand from Race to the Top, even though it was a four-year grant starting in two thousand nine. How have we managed to milk that for fifty thousand dollars?
So, I mean, I don't know. I don't know, we just.
Did they keep sending this on check?
Yeah, yeah, we don't spend.
It's like one of those things, like grandma tie, but don't tell anyone, they're just gonna keep.
They're not gonna come knocking on our door and say, about that fifty thousand, we shouldn't have, we shouldn't have sent you? Okay, so.
You jinxed it, now it's gone.
I jinxed it, yeah, right.
And I, I.
And on what page is the, is the kindergarten grant that we're probably not gonna get on this?
Yep. Where is it? Quality full day, it's on the second page, about halfway down.
Second page, halfway down?
Yep.
Okay. And what is the reason that that's probably not gonna happen again?
So the, the.
Oh, there it is, okay, so eighty thousand some dollars?
Yep. So the, in the governor's budget, the rationale was that those students who are full-day kindergarten are also funded through, right, Chapter Seventy, as full-day students, so there shouldn't be extra money through these grants for those students.
Got it, thank you.
It's just worth seeing, so, that doesn't help us a lot with our fall enrollment, so that's fine if each kindergarten student is an extra student, but as they just help, you know, we are below where we were last year anyway, so.
I got it, thank you.
I should just, I would just add that the curriculum department and Chris Panarisi have done a great job of seeking out more grants. And the last time I provided to this, it was larger, the type was larger, and it didn't run to as many pages, and that's because of the work Chris and others have been doing, trying to seek out and find grants all over the place, so.
Okay.
The governor decided to put the eighty thousand dollars back in the LEA, right?
See that again, sorry?
The Chapter Seventy, I mean.
That was a joke.
Yeah.
Eighty thousand not going back in the Chapter Seventy?
No.
Okay.
Well.
And it's taking next year's too.
Yeah.
His education secretary says no one needs it. Um, anything else for us?
Uh, the student activity accounts, just the next one. So, I don't know, so.
Pleased to see you want us to close a bunch of them.
Yes. So there's a little bit of, well, there's two reasons, one is we had, we did report on student activity accounts last year, and I wanted to continue doing that and like, a little more regular, a, but also there's a couple of things, it's sort of housekeeping matters, and I have, so if we do the high school first, Tom Trickers here from the high school, and he oversees student activity accounts.
Welcome, Tom, come on up to the mic.
So this is my first year of doing it, um, taking over for Brian Ebriger, who's done it for twenty, thirty years, so. We're looking at some of the accounts that, like from the class of nineteen seventy-four that we'd kinda like to close out. I know he kept them on the books, because in Quicket and Scott, a record of all the transactions, but I could just print those out, since we haven't had a transaction in those accounts for probably twenty years, thirty years. So I could do that and then file that away, so we have, but I think he kept them to keep, so that we have a record of it.
Okay, great.
So just as part of housekeeping, and under the, the state has recently issued new sort of clarifying audit guidelines on student activity accounts, and it's sort of the next step in them trying to really firm up and tighten up on the management of student activity accounts, which sets the bar higher than we've been asked to get to before, and they, we are being audited. Fortuitously, we are now being audited on those new guidelines next month, which will be pretty tough. But one of the things, so one of the things, those guidelines says that these accounts are supposed to be approved by school committee once a year. So the first step, I guess, we'd like, or would perhaps like to get, ask you to approve these, the high school student activity accounts.
Even the one with zero?
Well, that's, so it's kind of this funny, maybe if you want, do you wanna approve, you wanna approve them all, and then you can approve some of them to be closed, or approve all the ones that are not to be closed?
How about if we approve the ones that are zero to be closed?
So all of those zero ones are to be closed this evening, is that what you're saying?
Well, actually, it's not quite, it's not all the zeros, there's a little asterisks next to the ones, because there's just, I think there's one.
Just the one with asterisks.
Yeah.
It's the majority of the zeros.
Yeah, it's almost all the zeros, but not quite.
Before we do that, I got a couple of questions.
Sure.
No, when he's finished.
You ready for questions?
Yep.
Go ahead.
Well, if Brian did it for twenty years, I did it for fifty. And, and, um, I know things were a lot different, I know the state is really buckling down and trying to, um, maintain a, a system, but I, I really do have a couple of questions when I saw this, is, for one, when I took that over a gazillion years ago, I put in a voucher system, I, I think you still use it.
Yeah.
Um, and, um, at the time, advisors were handling the cash, and I was just doing the record keeping and so forth, but I, I've got a couple of questions, is, what is the, I don't know if it's a, if a new regulation or what, but what is the, um, the thr- the, the threshold or the bar when we close an account? No activity for one year, five years, ten years, where's the bar on that?
The new regulations, is that three years?
Three years, yeah.
If there's no activity for three years, then we can close.
Three years, you can close it, okay, fine. So let's say, you were just talking about the class of seventy-four.
Yeah.
All right, I was the advisor to the class of nineteen seventy-four, okay?
They still have a balance?
They have a balance, you know, does the advisor get the balance? No. All right, so they have a balance, the class of nineteen seventy-four, and you're gonna close it out?
They don't, no.
Well, whatever, hypothetically.
Exactly.
Um, they have a balance, and you're gonna close it out, after three years, no activity, close it out. And let's hear the balance. And let's say the balance is $1,000, just to make easy, easy numbers. Where does that $1,000 go?
Well, we have to have a policy for that, as part of the audit.
Yep, we do have a policy, actually, this.
Well, right now, where does the $1,000 go? Right now, as we, as we operate today, where does that $1,000 go?
It goes into, there is a high school general activity funds, I think.
It's closed into a general, a general fund? That's kind of the way we used to do it.
Within student activities, and it is just, it's just worth mentioning, as for example.
So it stays, it stays in a way in which the students can access that money somewhere down the road?
Exactly.
Because let's assume that they wanna have a big reunion for class of 74, and they got $1,000 in there, and they wanna access it. Could they come to Mr. Palladino and say, I want my $1,000?
No, well, very interestingly, it's still a student activity account, they are not students anymore.
Right.
I know, so I, because we, I saw, I tried, spoke to an expert on these things on that very mat, and he said, oh, just remind them that if they wanna, if they wanna spend on a.
They should be gainfully employed, pay for their own reunion as a fundraiser, and then donate it back to the school.
That's not the point, though, the point is, this was money raised by students for students.
For students.
And the whole idea of raising money as a class was to somewhere down the road, to use that money for a reunion, or for a get-together, or whatever, they, they felt that they needed to do. They needed three offices to submit a letter in which they had to use this, this money. Now, I, even though I closed out the account and put the money in the general fund, I still know what that ending balance was. So they weren't entitled to any interest, but they were certainly entitled to the money they raised. And you're telling me right now that, that that is not the case?
Uh, that is my understanding, because it's just, it has to be for student activities.
Well, then why would anybody wanna have money in a student activity account? Why would anybody wanna do that?
Well, for, well, they, they have their money in their student activity account to help the students while they're in school, so like the class of 2015.
Yeah, but once they get out of school, there's any money left, then they're not entitled to it. That, that class of 74 is not entitled to that $1,000.
Well, they usually vote to come up with some kind of class gift or something like that.
Yeah, but it doesn't always use all of it. I, I, looking through here, take a look at these accounts. Take a look at these accounts of kids, of classes that have graduated. You mean to tell me that they're not entitled to that money? And that's state law?
That is, yeah, I mean, it's not law, I mean.
If it's not law, then we ought to fix that, because that's wrong.
Yeah, just, just to be clear. Is it a, could we, could we do something, change the situation by a school committee policy? Or is this carved in stone based on state law? Because there's, one member of the class of 15 is probably looking over there and saying, gee, there's a balance of $5,000 in the class of 15 account, maybe we should spend it or lose it.
Yeah, well.
Well, but for the class of 2015, I mean, I know what you're saying, for that account, they're still gonna have, their yearbook fee, it needs to come out of that, some, they're gonna have expenses for that.
I understand, but the class of 2014 has a balance of $19,000.
That is correct.
That's been donated to the school.
It just hasn't been taken out yet.
Yeah.
Can't be taken out for six months till our graduation. They donated it to do landscaping in front of the building. Obviously with the snow, we haven't been able to do anything with that.
Okay.
But that's not, yeah, but, no, and there's another one, too. All right, just walk me through this for a second, all right, because I know things are different. Because back in the old days, you know, the senior class advisor needed a check, they would come knock on my door with a voucher in hand, I'd write them a check.
Right.
I know things are a lot different now. How long, let's assume that I'm the senior class advisor, and I wanna, I wanna, I wanna cut a check to pay for the prom.
Right.
How long does it take me to get a check on average?
Well, that's what we've been having some trouble with, because we, we, I submit the vouchers for approval, and then we have to wait until we get approval from the treasurer.
Where do the vouchers go?
It's a torturous process at the moment.
Right.
Where do the vouchers go?
They go through, they go from this high school to the business office, to the town accountant, to the town treasurer.
You gotta be kidding me.
No, so it could take two weeks, it could take a month. We've had some that, they've had a question about, so I've had to hold up a whole order for one question, so people didn't get checks for two months over the one, and some of the people that I couldn't give the checks to were our own custodians, our, our transportation.
That's an unworkable situation, when these vendors are waiting to get paid.
So, and so we are, we are conscious of this problem, and Scott, and Mr. Palladino, the principal of the high school, and Mr. Tricker and I have been talking to the treasurer and the accountant to try and speed up the process.
Mr. Chair, could we, could we get a report on this at some time in the future, in terms of, I wanna know exactly how this, this account works?
Or it doesn't work.
Or it doesn't work, because I'm sensing right now it doesn't work. And I'm, I'll be very, very upset if I find out the kids in good faith had money that they raised that they're not entitled to?
Well, it's also class dues, remember?
Well, no, it could be anything, it could be a fundraiser, it could be anything.
Well, that's my point, it's both their actual personal family money, as well as fundraising, so.
I mean, I.
The answer to your question is yes.
I think it's, it's obviously very important to do, I mean, just looking at the balances, except 2014, no other class has a balance in there. So.
Okay, I don't wanna go too long on this.
No, I know.
Mrs. Vugan, do you have something you wanted to say?
I mean, that was the one point, that there's only one class of 2014 that still has a balance. And what I'm assuming, but correct me if I'm wrong, is that as we're getting closer to the end of the year, the advisor of what that student activity is, as well as the students in that activity, are aware of what their balance is, and will be asked the question, what do you want to do with it?
Yeah, but Rhonda, that's not, that's not totally accurate, now, I don't mean to jump on you, but, but these classes, 2003, 2002, 2000, they may have had money in those accounts. Just because they have no money.
Okay, okay.
I don't think so.
Rhonda, you have the floor.
I'll bet you they did.
Rhonda, you all set?
No.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Rhonda.
What I'm assuming, in good faith, is as we have advisors and students, that there was some sort of discussion. And if it didn't happen, then I'm hoping that somebody comes up and says, where's my money? But right now, we haven't, we haven't had anyone come to the committee, or come to the superintendent, or come to the principal, or come to anywhere, and say that I feel that we've been duped. So I can understand that if that, if that has happened, that there could be a concern, but it doesn't seem like that's the case. So it goes back to, I am assuming, but correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Palladino, or, you, that, that during the process, as we get closer to the year, because I agree that student activity funds should be for student activities, and in that class, whether they wanna gift it or use it for whatever they want at the end, that, that there is some sort of process that, or discussion that happens, then this is all solved. Because we don't have any balances past 2014, and that really, we're talking about now going forward, but it sounds like that happens.
Mr. Lazarus?
Thank you. To enlighten you all a little bit, having been a class advisor for the class of 2004, at one point, the prior business manager at the high school had access to funds, and would get a sum of money to keep in a checking account that he kept at the high school. Do you still have that, Tom?
There is an impressed account that has about $600 in it.
Well, one time, there was a lot of money in that account. So the need for a check for the prom, as I had run into at least once, was available right away. At one time, the business manager at the high school, Dr. Sylvia O'Beir, witness to this, took care of all this money. Didn't go to the town. But now the town wants to be able to take advantage of the students' money. And now, if I'm right, Tom, you have to request this money from the town through some sort of a voucher or a warrant.
Well, I did require, I, we did the checks, do the vouchers. Once they approve a transfer from my savings account, or our, our activity savings account, to the checking account, then I can send the checks out.
But, the.
So.
I'm sorry.
So it does present something of a problem in terms of the reaction time to a voucher written by
Right.
a particular club or organization.
Right.
Yeah. Am I to understand that all of the accounts that have asterisks are accounts you wanna close out?
Yes.
That includes girls softball, girls soccer, the garden club, they're no longer active at all?
They, I ran in a report, the clubs that I'm asking to be dissolved or to cancel out, haven't had any activity in the last, I ran it for just a year, but I can go back and run it for three years, if you'd like, so.
Mr. McMillan, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Things too, um, we don't take care of any scholarship money in the student activities.
Right.
So all that goes to the town, so garden club, they might, they might have, and it's with code club, too, there's very little in their account. They have a scholarship account, so all their money goes to the town, and they go through for the scholarships. So I don't know if garden club has a scholarship, I'm not sure.
So none of these, none of these clubs?
And the other ones, we have the booster club, that's what we were gonna talk to Mr. Palladino about, as far as, they, they told us that we need to keep athletics separate from student activities, that's what I had been told before. So I was proposing that we close those accounts, if there's a student booster account, our student athletes booster account already for the team. So if girls soccer already has a booster account, you know, we might wanna look at closing that out.
Closing it out here.
Oh, closing it out here, yeah, but not in the booster account, no, no, right.
So, none of these, none of these organizations that you have asterisks next to are, are, have been active in the last three years?
Well, I ran a report for one year, I can go back and run it for three years, but I had, there was no activity in the past year, so.
One second, Cliff.
I know.
Well, I don't know, I just see some here that I know are still in existence. And do you have the ability to reopen accounts for these people?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yeah. Just like I can add a new account for the class of 2017. What I would do for those accounts that we close out, is I would print out a report of all the transactions, so I have that, which I think is why Brian was keeping them on the books, because if you wanted to see when the last money was donated to the class of, to, of 1974, I could type in 1974, and boom, there's all their deposits from, you know, 1972, or 1970, or whatever, to, to that account. So that's, I think, why he was keeping them in the, in the program, so. And if you want to keep them, that's fine, too, but I decided we'd clean, clean things up a little bit when we come and ask for approval of the accounts for every year, but.
I think the thing that bothers me the most about this whole thing is the lack of control that you have over this.
Especially if you have to wait three months for a check.
Yeah, that's lack of control to me. That you don't have the ability to control the check writing on.
Well, the approval of the checks, right, yeah, I can, you know, see the checks out, right.
You don't physically control this money, it's now in the hands of the town, is that right?
That's the law.
That's the law.
Well, you know, the, in, I think it's 96, they introduced, in response to the misappropriation of student activity account funds, the state introduced.
Trusting society.
Yeah, they introduced measures by which student activity accounts would be administered through interest accounts, and the, and checking accounts.
Mel, are you all set?
Oh, sure.
Cliff, did you have anything else?
No, because it says right here, the FY15 balances were all zero, so there's no money in these accounts that you're closing out today. None.
Just, just quickly, if there's a negative balance, that's all.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm looking at, like, the art club, we're gonna have in the next, we had to pay out a lot for the trip to New York, we'll have $1,000 coming in before we go to New York, so we'll rebalance that. The $24 for the soccer one, I talked to Scott, we can cover that and clear that one out.
I just don't, the, I understand what you're saying about the art club. I think the idea of consolidating the sports into the boosters makes a tremendous amount of sense, which is one of the things I was gonna ask you. I would like, what do you need from us tonight? I'm not sure you'll get it, but what do you need from us tonight?
So we would like, uh, a vote to approve the student activity accounts, which are not recommended for closure, to continue to exist. They're supposed to be approved by school committee every year, so it's just sort of.
So move.
And then.
Let's go.
I could swear I was named chair, but I guess it's hard for.
No, no.
Okay, I have much to my dismay, no, just kidding, a motion and a second on the floor.
Could you repeat it, because I didn't know it was happening.
Would you like to?
I move that we approve the accounts that are presented to us this evening with balances.
Chuck, that's, just to be clear, I think you actually want some accounts that have zero balances.
Well, that's another.
Well, that's the next part, you, the first part is.
No, no, but there are some that are zero that you don't want closed, isn't that correct?
Oh, yeah, right.
So what you really want is a motion to, to approve all the accounts without an asterisk.
Correct.
Yes.
That will be a good motion.
Second, okay, do I have a second for that motion?
Mel already did.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0.
Mr. Chair, I make a recommendation for the accounts that have an asterisk next to them to be closed at the recommendation of our presenters this evening.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Now that you've gotten what you want.
Yeah, we are over here.
Okay? I have a request, which I think the committee will in general endorse. I would like you to come back to us in the near future, doesn't have to be the next meeting, but not next year, okay? And talk to us about two things, one is, what is the policy by which you handle inactive accounts that have a balance? What happens to those balances, okay? And this, and the second thing I would like to know is, what is the, what is the policy by which balances from prior year graduates, what is the policy with respect to access of those monies, for example, 2014 with $19,000? We would like to know what that policy is. Maybe I should actually, more accurately say, what is the procedure, okay? Then this committee will determine whether we need a policy based on the current procedure.
Could you add one more thing to it?
Perhaps, it's not a motion, so go ahead.
The mechanics of get, getting through, like getting reimbursement or payment.
Yes.
I, I, I need a handle on the mechanics.
What, how can we expedite the procedure that you described, so that it can be achieved within, dare I say, a week? You know, I mean, that.
That's crazy, though, to ask a, a vendor to wait three months for a check is crazy.
I mean, the bottom line is, if Cliff could do it in an hour, and we can't.
No, I did it in five minutes.
And we, and, they had to get to you, I'm sure there was a long line in your office, okay? And we ought to be able to do it in a week, if, if 20 years or 30 years ago, they were doing it in an hour. Okay? So in the near future, now that I know you're looking for things to do. You'll regret ever having said that, you know.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just wanted to commend the two of you, as well as anyone else involved, in doing the work to be able to go back and take a look at all these accounts, and decide really what, I think, starting from scratch and doing everything that you did, is only gonna help us going forward. I understand that there's a timing issue with the law of that it has to go through the town, and I'm sure that with working with the town, that they'll figure out a way to be able to close, give a timing on when it comes back. So just thank you for everything that you guys did.
So, so, I'm sorry, just before we move off, we do have the middle school, eh, activity accounts, just to review quickly as well.
I could've sworn you said you wanted to get out of there.
Thank you.
I was gonna say.
It's on the last page.
Oh, it's the last page, of the same, of the same stretch.
Yep, exactly.
Okay. And I see you've, you've got reinforcements for this test. Welcome.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay, so this is the final page? It still says high school. Oh, wait a minute, sorry, sorry, I have to keep going down, okay. I compliment you on the fact that there are so few.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, so you're looking for approval of this?
Please.
Can, can I assume that the middle school has some of the same issues, some, but not all, that, that we've already talked about? Like getting access to the money?
Yes.
I, I actually saw your expression, you were nodding your head in agreement. Okay. Okay. Are there any questions about these accounts before I take a motion to approve?
Oh, I see.
And since there's no asterisk next to the readers become leaders, I'm going to assume you want to keep that open.
I think eventually we'll want to close it, but it's been active within the last year, so not tonight.
Not tonight.
I move that we approve the middle school accounts listed on page six of our report.
Second.
Student activity accounts, yes, I hear a motion and a second. Any questions, concerns, comments, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much.
You can escape.
Yeah.
Okay. So, we've got some reports. Reading these correctly, yes. Madam Superintendent, would you like to discuss these?
Yes, I, thank you.
Two reports?
Yes.
Are you getting sick, by the way?
Yes.
You shouldn't sit next to the student representative.
Well, I think she's sick, too, so.
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
I thought you were fine when the evening started.
Yes, it's creeping in. The student attendance report, currently, we have, Deccas is at ninety-four point six percent attendance, minus ninety-four point seven, West is sixty-nine percent, the middle school's at ninety-five percent, and the high school is at ninety-four point six, Co-op is at eighty-nine point five. What I would point out would be, we've had a number of snow days and delays, and then with the reconfiguration of kindergarten through fourth grade, we see a little bit of a drop there. Overall, we provided you with a comparison, and we believe that we're pretty well on track. So, this is your mid-year student attendance report. Any questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Is there, does the state provide a benchmark at, at the different grade levels, or is it just a state average for, just on average, I mean, for a district? They don't, they don't break it up by grade level?
By school, we will.
Okay. It'd be great on this, I know it's a mid-year report, but even taking a look for, just being able to have the state average on here, to be able to compare for future reports, that'd be great.
Okay. We can do that.
Anything else? If, in the top section, there are two lines, one says percent of attendance, and the other says gives a date range. I'm, guess I'm a little confused, what is the first line reference?
The first line is what I present is this year. The second one is what it was last year at the.
Oh, it says fourteen, sorry.
Yes.
Sorry, yes, okay, got it. And secondly, when, for example, it says middle school, this year ninety-three point seven. It's my understanding, but correct me if I'm wrong, is that any number below ninety-five is a basis for, has some impact on how they assess our level at the state? Is that an accurate statement?
Right, we would like to be about ninety-five percent.
Right. So, how badly are we hurt by a number of ninety-three point seven when the state would like to see ninety-five?
Yeah, I think that we'll be back up.
You do?
I do.
Okay. Any other questions from the committee? Seeing none, next report, please.
Okay, school choice, just to give you a overview.
There was, no, there's one other report there.
School attending children.
School attending?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So, the school attending report, I think that there could be a whole bunch of questions on this, I know that I have, is there any way that we might be able to move this to the next agenda?
Are you suggesting you aren't prepared for this evening?
No, I'm prepared, I'm looking at nine thirty-five, and as your first night as chair, going past the hour of ten, I don't think that we would all take too kindly to, so I would ask, I'm only kidding. So, but, but I just think that for the, the school, for the attending children's report, that there could be a lot of discussion on this, and, but I'll open it up to the rest of the committee members.
Actually, I would really like to do that, because we've done some.
So, you skipped it over intentionally and thought I wouldn't notice? Okay, I, I, I will be happy to move this to the next meeting.
Thank you.
Unless there's serious objection from my other members of the committee. And I'm sure the school committee student representative is probably the reason you kicked you under the table to see if you would be willing to propose that.
Post shooting daggers behind your head.
Oh, okay, okay. Next.
Just from my report, on the twenty-eighth, we were given notice that MSBA will be visiting us to look at the roof at Deccas. It will be at ten thirty, if anyone would like to be present, we'd be very happy to have you accompany as we look at the repair needed for the roof.
Would you send an email out with the date, time, place?
Happy to do that.
Thank you. The vote on the school choice.
Oh, I forgot that one, didn't I?
I know, that wasn't intentional, right?
No, that was not.
No, okay. Go ahead.
Okay. Every year, the school committee must vote by May first if they're going to accept school choice students. It would be my recommendation for the committee to vote in affirmative to accept school choice students. Sometimes people ask questions, well, can you just vote no and not take school choice? You could vote no. We would not take school choice, but that does not mean students cannot leave to go to other districts for school choice. It would not be to our advantage to vote no, because we do receive some monies coming in. So, I would recommend to the committee to vote in affirmative of school choice, and as we need to report this to the state.
I'll take a motion to approve school choice for the school district for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen, sixteen.
All schools?
Yes.
With the exception of West.
Oh, with the exception of West.
And it's a K to twelve, not pre-kidney.
Right.
So, just to be clear, it's school choice, two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen, K to twelve, excluding the West Wareham Academy. Which is consistent with prior years.
Correct.
So move, second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero. Have you finished with your report?
I have, thank you.
Okay. Finally, the superintendent brought to the policy review committee's attention that we are at a competitive disadvantage as a result of our policy with respect to the entrance of children to the school, the age of this, of the child when they want to come to kindergarten in Wareham Public Schools.
Didn't we just change this?
Yeah.
Shortly?
Yes, we did.
Yeah.
So, this policy, which you have had included in your packet, in essence, goes back to the original policy, essentially. It was changed effective two thousand and twelve, thirteen, from September thirtieth to August thirty-first. This would bring it back to essentially the same, October first, beginning this school year. I'm not going to steal your thunder, you can feel free to add, but basically, we've got parents that want to get their kids in, and when they can't get them in because the date is July, excuse me, because the date is August thirty-first, they go somewhere else. And we don't want that to happen, especially if our assessments indicate that they're ready for us. So, it still has some superintendent and building principal and assessment considerations, that all remains the same, we're really just changing the date back to October first. Did I summarize that well enough?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussions or questions for the superintendent?
I think this is a great recommendation.
I do, too. Any further discussion, I'll take a motion. And, by the way, it was approved unanimously by the policy review committee.
I move to accept the change in the entrance age policy to reflect October one.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? It is approved, five zero zero, thank you very much.